As we call to order, as a reminder, if you plan to make a public comment this evening, please say comment, Chris, Mrs. Howard, at this time, if you've not done so already. We did just have a special meeting a few minutes ago. We got two new guests here, so I think due to that, we will go ahead and continue with doing our pledge again, so I would ask that you sign on cell phones in the room you have, as we stand for the pledge of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we do the roll call, please, Mrs. Thomas?
Amy Hansen.
Present.
Matthew.
Present.
Murphy.
Present.
O'Donnell.
Present.
Amber.
Present.
And Mark.
Present. All right, I need a motion to adapt the agenda as presented.
To move, support.
The motion is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. All right, up first this evening, as always, are our reports, and we will start with our student board representatives.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. So to start with the high school, so the seniors have officially started summer. Yay, the clap out was so really big hit. Everyone had a good time, you know, kind of saying bye to everybody, love if it were their classmates, to their teachers that they had throughout the years. It was definitely a bittersweet day. Graduation cap and gown pickup is Friday, May twenty-third at two thirty, so just after school, they're kind of both good because they can go to the gym and they can grab everything. And then I see everybody knows graduation's coming up. Well, it helps the board know, so, but, so, yeah, so that's next Friday. And then, actually, Sunday, June first, is our whole project graduation night, and that's super exciting. We're all looking forward to that. I believe it's, I think it's like Call of Legacy, or, and we all was going, we had a bunch of fun all night, and we're super excited for that. And then, for sports updates, Ellen and I both have some. I was just talking about the Linden softball team, so they are Flint Metro League champions after a big win to Lincoln yesterday.
And before I start my report, I actually want to give a brief thank you to Lizzie for everything that she's done, that she's definitely, I would not have known about this position or role without her, and she's definitely been a big part of mentoring me and telling me how to do all of this, so, as it is for last meeting. Going into more sports, Linden Track and Field has eleven state qualifiers, seven boys and four girls, after regionals last Friday, and state finals are in June summer. There were four regional champion performances from that day as well. And Boys Lacrosse has a playoff game today against Grand Rapids, and Linden Boys varsity golf finished third in the Flint Metro League after their league conference tournament this past Monday.
At the middle school, so the end of the year field trips are coming up, so the eighth graders have their trip to Cedar Point, seventh graders have their Land State Love Nuts game, and then the sixth graders have their roller pavin field trip. And then the eighth grade recognition ceremony is on June sixth at seven forty-five in the morning in the Linden Middle School gym. It's actually a crazy thing about, like, I always say, I always feel like yesterday was like mine, and that's the thing with graduate high schools, it's weird.
And at Central, today was their sword day. They had the option to participate in karaoke, nine square, cornball, et cetera. They also had multiple inflatables there. The event was moved indoors, this is the iffy weather. Specifics for field trips coming up, so depending on their class, either May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, or thirtieth, the fifth graders are attending Greco Village. The fourth graders' field trip to Macmillan is May thirtieth, or, yeah. And then, fifth graders head to Flash Village on June third, and fourth graders are back out and about to the roller pavin on June fifth. The fifth graders hop out with the last day of school, June sixth, which is a half day as well.
At Linden, now their sword day was moved to May twenty-ninth, so they will have inflatable games, fun games, and they'll also have karaoke. And then the second graders are going to be walking through downtown Linden and just as kind of a wrap-up for the Rock City. And then the sword ticket challenge is still going on, hoping for six hundred tickets in May, and then the reward is a slushy day.
And at Hyatt, for those who bought flowers in their spring flower sale, which was a big hit from Pals, they will be available for spring of tomorrow at the school. And their sword day is Friday.
And then at Argentine, the last day of preschool, again, May twenty-second, and then celebrations with their families is on May twenty-third, and then home visits will start to be concluded beginning May twenty-seventh and all the way through to twenty-ninth. So the plan, again, just a reminder from last meeting as well, just the plan is to have the whole building at Argentine packed up by May thirtieth, with, again, hopes of moving around June ninth through the eleventh. And then Summer Eagle Club Camp still be at Argentine, and then, so registration for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year is underway, and I have some numbers. I know some people like to hear them. So for the Summer Eagle Club Camp, twenty-nine students, and then Eagle Club, that was summer, it's like regular, is thirty-five, and they also increased their hours from six-thirty AM to six PM. For three-year-old preschool, twenty-six students, and for four-year-old preschool, seventy-nine students. And that is all we have, and I just want to thank the board for everything you guys have done for me and this amazing opportunity. I thank you all.
Thank you, Lizzie. I'm sure we have not done as much for you as you have done for us, but I have more to say a minute, but I'll tell my board. Mr. Sisalcy, you can do your board report now.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody, this evening. We have a couple things to report out on. First of all, just an update on our pre-apprenticeship program. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to join two of our graduating seniors who were part of the pre-apprenticeship program that we have in partnership with Niles Industry at Fenton. Congratulations to Jason Dierdorff and Emma Hotch. The pre-apprenticeship program allowed our students to complete the MC three curriculum, become OSHA ten certified, CPR certified, and get hands-on experience working and being paid with Niles Industry. This opportunity to put both of these students in a position, position to join a apprenticeship program without having to complete the prerequisites. It's a great opportunity for our students, and we're looking forward to what happens next year in growing our pre-apprenticeship program. Congratulations to the Linden High School esports team. Linden made it to the Michigan High School Esports League state quarterfinals in Street Fighter VI, and Leo Key was given Allstate honors in Overwatch II. Also being recognized was our esports coach, Sherry St. Clair. Miss St. Clair was recognized as the MHSEL Impact Award winner. This award recognizes dedicated individuals who go above and beyond to support, mentor, and guide others while making a significant contribution to the scholastic esports ecosystem in the entire state of Michigan. Just a little plug for our district-wide art show. On May eighth, we held the first Linden Community School Student Showcase Art Show. We estimated that about seven hundred individuals attended the art show to view over twelve hundred pieces of student art. Art mediums included student paintings, drawings, sculptures, digital art, pottery, woodworking, two-dimensional and three-dimensional art, and a goal room, which is pretty popular. A special shout-out to our art teachers who made this all happen. Betty Toy and Sherry St. Clair, Sherry St. Clair from Linden High School, Michelle Sanholz at Linden Middle School, and our elementary fine arts teachers, Conriss Frank and Alicia Books. I would also like to thank our elementary pals group for their support and help, and be ready for next year. And finally, just a reminder that graduation ceremony for the class of two thousand twenty-five is scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-ninth, at Claude Trancin Stadium. The ceremony does begin at seven PM. And board, thanks to Mr. Dresky, we have put some information that outlines just some highlights for your preparation for May twenty-ninth. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. Any board members with reports this evening? All right, I have one, and I'm gonna do my board report from the other podium, just because I can. Lizzie, would you like to join me? Just because I can ask you to.
That's all right.
Thanks for you. All right, that should work. So here's a little search to... Well, thank you, and I wrote down a few things because I knew I wouldn't be able to just say this, so I'm gonna just read from here. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank one of our student board representatives, Elizabeth Story. Lizzie, your presence on the board over the past year and a half has been so meaningful. Now I'm gonna be choked up. Now I'm, no, it's got me. Not just symbolically, but in the way you consistently brought thoughtful insight, maturity, and a genuine concern for your fellow students. We always look forward to your thorough updates on things going on in each of the buildings and in the district, and for bringing back information and ideas that represent all the students. I think this is the first time in, like, board history that we've had a student board rep, A, that is consistent, and B, really has taken their arms around district-wide, not just the high school. So we really appreciate that. You've helped to remind us during the importance of keeping student voices at the center of our decisions, and you've done so with great professionalism and a strong sense of responsibility. We truly appreciate your contributions and the important perspective you've brought to our discussions. Lizzie, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, thank you for your service and dedication. We wish you all the best in your future. Thank you. All right, this brings us to the next item on the board agenda tonight, which is other special recognitions, and we have a high school student here for a student of the month recognition. So, Mr. Dresky, would you like to present your high school student of the month?
I'd like to bring up Max Smith, and his presenter, Mrs. Michelle Horning. And I appreciate taking the time to bump this back. Max had some scheduling difficulties last time, so to give him center stage all by himself, that's much appreciated. So without further ado, Max is another representative of the wonderful students that we have here at LHS. We've got a bunch of praise for you. So congratulations, and I'll let Mrs. Horning read her prepared statement of good stuff. Congratulations.
So I will just read my nomination that I submitted. I nominate Maxwell Smith for student of the month. I got to know Max last year when he began asking questions about dual enrollment. Max had already done a great deal of research before meeting with me. He asked excellent questions and was very enthusiastic to learn more. I tend to overwhelm students with information, but Max was very eager to take in all the info. Max actively seeks out opportunities to expand his knowledge. His inquisitive nature is evident in the insightful questions he poses during our discussions. Max maintains a positive attitude at all times and serves as a role model to his classmates. He has taken the initiative to get a head start on his college education by rolling in dual enrollment courses through Mott, as well as pursuing advanced placement courses at Linden High School. This drive exemplifies his commitment to his academic and personal growth. Max's exceptional attitude, leadership, and strong dedication to his academics set him apart from his peers. I am confident that he will continue to excel and positively impact those around him. I believe Max is the perfect candidate for student of the month. Thank you for considering my nomination of this outstanding student.
Max, congratulations. I always tell the high school students, it's a real honor, I feel like, as like a middle schooler or high schooler, to be like, be student of the month out of like, the whole high school. So that's pretty special, so congratulations and keep up the good work. Do you have something you'd like to say? You were at the microphone.
Just thank you guys for rescheduling and being okay with that.
Yeah.
It was very unfortunate that I called this board.
It's all right. You got it, Mark. This is good. Yes, very responsible. Well, we're glad we could have you here to honor you tonight, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll also mention, oh, Mrs. Horning's here. Thank you for all the information you send out to students regarding dual enrollment as well. I know that's super helpful, and even over spring break, you sent them a reminder that they had to register. So thank you for keeping them on track.
I'm a real nagger.
No, it's perfect. All right, so this evening, we have one administrative update. Mrs. Thomas is here to give us a presentation and information on some of our testing benchmark data and some other updates from the curriculum and assessment areas. So, Mrs. Thomas, whenever you're ready.
I'm gonna tell us next. Okay, a couple things I just wanted to let you know is that I thought a couple of errors when I was going back to retrace some of the data, so I'll get you an updated one, and we're gonna focus more on the fall to spring, okay? So basically, we want, what we wanna try to do is look at a couple times during the course of the year, make sure we share the benchmark data. The data slide did follow in terms of spring, the interim benchmark data that the state of Michigan requires us to do. And so, that is something that we, as building, our principals go through this year with your staff, as well as at the end of the year, they look through the cluttered data that I'll show you in the slides that I introduced to you earlier this year. So, again, I'll update all the slides for you after this meeting, and make sure you have this spring to spring before the issues start. The data today, we'll just focus on the fall to spring, and it comes out of our balanced assessment system that we have been really pushing this visual with our staff as we started learning about a balanced assessment system. And oddly, what are we doing, and what are we not doing, really, to feel better job of? And we involved, this involved all of our leadership at our buildings, our principals, social coaches, other assessment reps from every building last year, and we went through a year-long training with the Michigan Assessment Consortium on a balanced assessment system. This next, this year, current year, we've ended on researching and piloting some of the assessments and trying to really capitalize that, and new lives are moved scheduled in September and January on early release days, using those as day-to-days with our staff. And that's been very beneficial. So you can see in the balanced assessment system, we're gonna talk a little bit about the interim benchmark assessments in the PDA that you're not new to, but we'll talk about that tonight. So looking at, for example, Hyatt Elementary, this data selection of the fall Hyatt update. So you can see from grade level to grade level, we're increasing our data. Most of the students are at or above the benchmark throughout the course of the year, okay? So this is Hyatt Elementary School. We have roughly a couple of percents at that of change that's come along. Our second grade, let me just mention, our second grade made substantial gains. That particular group had some different needs, and it, which will be addressed with our resource and supports in our special education program next year over at Hyatt Elementary. I've been working with Mr. Stricker, as well as his resource teacher, and Mrs. Smith, our special ed coordinator, on programming for that particular cohort. At Linden Elementary, this is their fall to spring data, and we have addressed some of the, some of the dips with the grade levels. I've been working with Mrs. Stricker with that building, and looking at what we might want to do in terms of supporting some of the kind of our students. We also have a third grade group that has been a little bit more struggling with the math, and we have had push-in supports for those classrooms, and they've really taken a hold of that. Those kiddos are gonna be moved over to Central next year, and we work with Casey, have a transition plan for them, and looking at trying to group kids as needed for supports. This is our Central data. We tried to reprogram this year for our, our supports for special education, and really worked at kids who need to push in reading, push in math, with the research, teaching, classroom teacher, and being there to support them. So lots of inclusion, as well as gap fill, carrying them out and providing supports for that. This is our middle school. Middle school has the council following supports for all of their students as well. And as you'll notice, as you go up the grade levels in our benchmarks, kind of hover, similar to what you might see on an MSEP. This is an example of the achievement status and growth summary that we pull for every teacher. I have been working with Mrs. Stricker's Linden L staff this year, because I'm certified in the evaluation tool, and work with every teacher and talk about their growth, discuss what their percentage of growth was in both reading and math. The goal is to get everybody in the reading area, which shows high growth and proficiency. The yellow is still proficient, and what we want them to be, rising and having substantial growth. And the red is, you can see in this particular classroom, there's still growth there, it's just that those are the kids who are not hitting the benchmark proficiency. And the oranges are showing substantial growth. So that's kind of what we look at for all of our classrooms and really support teachers. We use this data when we identify kids who are supports in our tier systems. This is an example of the class profile. There's also a similar report just like that that I pulled the data from, is this school profile. And then we have breakdowns by instructional areas. For example, this is our math, and you can use the RIT scores to determine what supports they might need, whether it's cohort or individual groups of students that might be reteaching around geometry or number and operations and so forth, which are aligned to our standards. In each grade level, we work pretty hard at identifying priority standards. For example, in math, this year, we've done heavier emphasis at Central for the fourth and fifth grade, had several full gym meetings. I had a group come out and help with that work to prioritize standards and really unpack, and have the guaranteed bio curriculum. The teachers collectively agreed on these, and they call them priorities. They all know they're all following them. We introduced that same work to second and third grade this year in September and the fall kindergarten. First grade, I'm gonna tag on, so that'll be solid. School improvement, when you think about school improvement, we have to have a needs assessment, where we look at where, what areas do we wanna focus on and support, and that could be assistance piece, it could also be more student-related assessment data, and also survey data. And that includes even culture and climate when we're looking at to support, because we have to think about the behaviors and that data that we get from our promoting positive school climate. This past year, we implemented building improvement teams, as well as the district improvement team continued to develop, so it's been really exciting with that work that we have. So I've kind of highlighted that number two, which is multi-tiered systems of support, which is the blue that holds a lot of our continuous improvement together. We had all of those areas we continue to focus on, but I just wanted to mention more about MTSS and how we've grown in this past year. Every building administrator, as well as their reps at the district level and executive level, went back to their buildings and really did implementation and built their building implementation team to combine their student assistance teams and their promoting positive school climates together. So we have both sides of the pyramid thinking about behavior and academics on those leadership teams. We, we call them coalition, we will. So last year, like I said, we really did that district implementation team, the building implementation teams, and increased clarity and communication between the building, the district's implementation team, and our executive team. Our executive team has been going for two years to a cohort at the ISB to gain more insights on the implementation of a multi-tiered systems of support, which all of our principals come with me. We have our student principals at middle school, high school, and all of our building administrators come, along with ancillary staff, our special ed coordinator, and so forth. And then we build and others, we build that data of what we need to work on, bring it back to our district implementation team, and then brings it back to the building implementation team. And our systems are struggling to really show that strength and priority, so we're excited about that. Next year, based on our district capacity assessment and our tier fidelity inventories and the other data we collect for MTSS to determine our successes, we have identified these areas of focus, continuing that district orientation at the NWA growth team, but also strengthening our day-to-day days with that executive team. District uses a communication plan, we wanna really help have a protocol and a communication plan between the executive team, the district, which is a little bit bigger team, and our building teams. We're also looking at preschool through twelfth grade character strengths innovation plan, and that came out of our exec team. We really love positive projects, but we feel we should try to Lindenize what we're doing, and a little forecast, a little bit on the portrait of an eagle, if you will, and trying to look at those character strengths from that perspective. So Russ Moll bringing that to our strategic planning team and representatives from that to really build that together. And then lastly, strengthening our SAT process and identification for student supports, meaning our exit and entrance, entrance and exit criteria for a student that's in the student assistance team. And that's what our, like, the focus is for MTSS next year. So we're pretty excited about that. And that's it.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Cheryl. Appreciate all the information and the overview. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas, for the presentation. Could you, let's go back to the slides where we look at the percentages for all various buildings and all various grades.
Sure.
What does a percentage mean in any given town?
When we, originally, we were doing the RIT scores, and I knew that that's hard for people to gather and comprehend. So the percentage means how many students hit the benchmark RIT score that NWBA, Nationwide, they look at that in comparison to other schools, right? And those, those children at that grade level. And so, that, that is the lowest RIT score, and we wanna make sure we get it, everyone at that or above, okay?
Right.
So they hit a benchmark.
Right.
It's a little bit different than proficiency.
Okay, so, you know, ideally, we'd like to have everybody be at the RIT score, which would make it a hundred percent, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, when I look at these scores, some of them go down, like, from the spring to fall, which I thought was kind of unusual?
No.
Is it the same?
Not necessarily. I mean, some of the content that they get, it becomes more increasingly difficult, right?
Oh, yeah.
So there shifts.
Okay, man, I ask a question. Are they testing under the same standards in this fall? Is it, and then spring is around the previous?
The scope is larger, because the students are learning more, so, because this is an adaptive test.
Okay. So it does show growth even though, it could be growth even though it doesn't show growth.
For example, right, I can't give you all the teacher names, but like, we, I handed, for example, last year, the essentials to show either new principal there, and then I worked on that with Jamie this year to show her how that looks. And, you know, for example, we had many teachers who had ninety-nine to a hundred percent growth in different areas for their kids. The students might not hit the RIT score, they might be a little bit lower, but they're showing growth. That's what our, it's all about growth. Because we have to remember, not every child comes to kindergarten exactly ready for all of the kindergarten details. Same thing for a seventh grader. They may not be, you know, ready for all of the content in seventh grade, but as long as they're making substantial growth, which is significant, and shows that, our data reports provide that in that AGS report, and that's this one here. There's a report that goes underneath there, listing every single student saying, did they have growth? Yes or no, right? And so we can look at that data to see, to see. And kids who still make growth, but it's not significant, might do like a no plus, but they are, they're not at what they need to be, but they are making progress. So that's another piece we have to look at, trying to look at the rate it can go, and not just look at their RIT score.
So, like, and I know this is like, like, let's just take, for an example, Linden Elementary, spring, and I don't know if this is accurate, the spring's a spring?
Remember, I told you after we do that, we'll make the spring to spring and get that to you.
Okay.
So we're doing the fall to spring, right?
Okay, we're doing the fall to spring, and there's like that. I just, there's a, let's see here.
So let's do that.
So we can go for the previous one slide, which is, so like, a third, second grade student in two thousand twenty-four would be a third grade student in two thousand twenty-five, correct?
Yeah, like, for example, like, right now, this is only showing you, right, the second grade kids, like, for example, who were in the fall at sixty-eight percent, you can look at the spring of the previous year, right?
Well, I look at, like, say, the second grade students in the fall of two thousand twenty-four were sixty-seven percent, and then in third grade, that same group of kids had dropped to sixty percent?
Well, this is just that, I'm only showing, right now, you can't, it really depends on the cohort, right? We can break it down by cohort, would you like me to do that for my next report?
Okay, I was just looking for whether that was a trend that concerned you at all?
No, I mean, honestly, it's more about the cohort. So, for example, I know that there's some students who can identify the supports in different cohorts, and so that's what we have the program for. And every year, it's a different group of kids, right? And so they have different needs.
Okay, so moving out to, like, the middle school, last, last meeting, we had a presentation from middle school, and they talked about how successful they were in accounting and the EEP scores for math.
Yes, our math was tough. First in the county for six, seven, and eighth grade.
So when I see that, and I look at these bench scores for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in the spring of two thousand twenty-five, they don't look at, like, percentages that mean, suggest that you were the best in the county.
That's showing that they hit the benchmark, or they're above, right? And this does typically mirror what they might do on an MSEP. And, for example, some of the higher districts, if they, their proficiency is different than their RIT score, but their proficiency might have only been fifty percent that they were top in the county, because that's what the PET score was for the MSEP math. You can, you can see a trend, or it can give you a trajectory, and there's some studies around that, and so that's why we like to look at our benchmark data, because if they hit a benchmark, they're more likely to be passing the MSEP. And seventy-seven percent of our students in grade, you know, who are showing that they hit that benchmark or above, most likely, they will be very strong in the MSEP.
Right. Yeah, kind of. Yeah, kind of. Like you said, the presentation, we had suggested that we compare middle school average. Looked in the number, or was it just the eighth grade? I was a little bit confused.
Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade were top in the county for math.
Each grade?
Each grade.
Individual?
Yes.
No, okay, okay. And so, when I look at these percentages again, I guess it's the NWA, I kind of have a hard time appreciating what you tell us. Because to me, it looks like, we're not doing very well, probably at the percentages. But then I hear things like, you know, we get at the county level, we're not.
And I want to see, yes, this is an indicator, but our goal is to work on some of the assessments.
Mm-hmm.
And the middle school has done that. They've done it with their new program called Reveal.
Right.
And so, that's a different dashboard. And our goal is to try to have some of that data in a district-wide dashboard, so we can be able to dig in for some of the data across all grades. Because that would be one other piece. So, we have MSEP, which is more of a state data piece. We have our benchmark data, and then we have some of the assessment data, which would help us to really look at those three sources to determine if there are truly areas we need to dig in. We still use what we have and work on that, and we use this to program everything from tier interventions from our college tier systems of support, things who we decide we have accelerated math classes at the middle school, all sorts of supports that we use, our benchmark data. But we also use the classroom teachers' information as well to determine if they need to stay in a particular cohort.
Just the process of taking a test, whether it be an NWA, AAT test, or a NEET, 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 it would be a NEET test?
MSEP, or PSAT or SAT.
Yeah, you know, they're probably slightly different types of tests to take.
And that's why we want that balance, so like when you look at the big picture here. And that's why we have to remember that no one part of that triangle is the end all. The most important data, to be honest with you, is the purple, which is closest to the child and the student as far as the growth. And that's the classroom teachers' assessments, formative, which are not graded, and some of the assessments that they do that are graded. Okay, so, we're trying to kind of have some of that purple in our triification.
Right. Regardless of whether it's an NWA test or an MSEP test, do we do anything to try and teach the kids how to take the test?
Yeah, there's practice items that teachers do prior to both MSEP. There's guideline practice, and Mr. Zaselski helped to share that out to parents too, that I provided for in work. The state provides parent access to do some practice items as well on the MSEP, as well as teachers do practices on the MSEP. And the NWA, every time you take it, they have some practice items to remind them of what to do.
Do you feel that's an effective process to improve test scores?
Yes, but I think that there's always more to it. I think that the purple area, what I'm really passionate about, and Russell knows this too, is I'm really passionate about counting some of the assessments, because I've seen it as a building principal makes substantial gains. All of it's important, okay? But like the MSEP is a one-day assessment. It's a basic skills test, we should be doing just fine with that. But it's also my responsibility and my role to make sure teachers don't have extraneous things that are on their plate, but to help them to focus on the priorities of their content and their courses. And, you know, we have expert teachers that help to write that and really follow those things, so.
I guess I'm just hoping that we have the process in place where we can best prepare a student to take a test so that they don't take a test and incorrectly answer a question that they knew, but they just got caught up in the promotion of taking a test with less.
Sure, let me just kind of speak to what you're saying. Like, so, for example, the, at this particular school, we had a lot of discussion with one of the teachers about how they did it whole group. They really felt that they should have done their spring benchmark in a small group in this kindergarten.
Okay.
You know, when I was at Hyatt, they didn't do that, and they didn't seem to need that, but that might have changed now because kids are different. So, there's little things that a teacher can do in the early grades that those children don't have a lot of experience in an online assessment, right? But we don't use this data, it's an interim benchmark, we don't use this data as a grade.
Okay. All right, I think that kind of gives me some guidance. Appreciate it. Thank you for the report.
All right, any other questions or comments from Mrs. Thomas?
I guess the only little comment I'll make kind of regarding Steve's comment here is with the NWA, students are doing it from kindergarten on, they know what to do.
They do. And then, you know, and like you remember, and I love middle school because I love one.
I do.
But, you know, there starts to be a thing where, how important is this, right? So, our teachers really have to explain to them, it is really important. It helps you to see how you're doing.
Yeah.
When teachers touch this and they bring kids up and they show them, like, I've seen different teachers at the middle school, elementary, whatever, really showing the student where their fall and their spring scores are and that, hey, look at you, you did improve. It means something.
It does mean something. I know, I mean, my daughter brought her sheet home, and she was all disheveled, and she didn't show as much growth as some of her friends. And I had to explain to her what that meant. I'm like, looking at your report, you know, you were maybe higher in the first place, which is why you showed less growth, you know, maybe than someone else. And she's like, oh, yeah, so-and-so, it's because they all come here. And mind you, she said this, and then she turned around, she were right in the garbage, and I was like, okay, I'm not looking at it. You know, so that's how, I mean, it's like, obviously, she was concerned, but not concerned enough to like have her own day. But I do think by middle school, like, explaining to them what the report means is important that they know and they do compare with others. The teachers do a great job too of kind of offering some reward systems for the students in middle school to help them focus.
Yes, I have her, she borrowed the mess, but we need to talk about how it's important that it's not extrinsic rewards, it's more intrinsic, right?
Yeah.
You know, that we're not going to punish kids who didn't test well. Everybody gets it.
Yeah. Well, it can be more rewards than the candy bars, it's like a week off of Alex or Freckle or everything.
Okay, I hear you, love.
That's the big one that they, that they like to get out of if they can. Anyway, no, thank you very much, and this is great.
All right, are we getting any public comments between Mrs. Kelly? All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes from our work session meeting on May 7, minutes of the closed session meeting from May 7, invoices for the month of April, the personnel summary sheet, and the MHSAA resolution for 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I will second that also. So, we have a motion and support to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Aye, vote. Motion carries. All right, we have a couple of action items this evening. The first being the GISC budget resolution. Mr. Haney attended the annual budget meeting on April 30th and shared information back with the board during the last meeting. I, of course, I was not at the last meeting, but it is the administrative recommendation to approve the GISC budget resolution as Mr. Haney presented it. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
So, we've decided it, so with that, any other questions or comments? Or was there a question?
I think Mr. Haney enjoyed his experience there with the resolution and the budget process. And I think he found the same thing I found here in the board. They do, they do their program very well, and they, you know, seem to dial rise across all the teams, so. I think we're appreciative, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for giving me that quick update as well, since I wasn't at the last meeting this Friday.
Yeah, I was saying, I was at Steve's point. So, yeah, Mr. Haney made a big deal and said a lot about the fact that he was kind of impressed with how much the GISC really does and how much they have come to deliver in terms of quality and cost savings to the districts that it serves. So, yeah, I think he was in full support of approving the budget resolution. So, he did very expert, yeah, thank you for the remarks.
Perfect. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, it is moving to second to approve the GISC budget resolution for 2025, 2026 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, vote. Motion carries. All right, and our second action item for this evening is regarding the GISC biannual election resolution. So, follow-up to our special meeting prior to this meeting. It is the district's responsibility to take action, to vote for candidates for the open seats for the Genesee County Board, I guess, yeah. So, we had this discussion earlier regarding the two candidates. And it looks like at the last meeting, maybe you guys, Mr. Haney had agreed to be the representative and Mr. Murphy as the alternate for this voting as well. Give it a second, okay. So, it is the administrative recommendation to vote for the two candidates to fill the two six-year term seats, Mr. Giliran and Mr. Turner, as earlier discussed. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
So moved. Second, any other questions or comments on this?
Just as I expressed earlier, I'm surprised that there are only two people to put their name in consideration for two seats. It's pretty important, board, they do a lot of guidance for the ISB, and I think these two individuals will probably do a fine job. Would have been interesting to have more comparison with other candidates. But I'm in favor of supporting both candidates.
Very good. All right, with that, we will go ahead and vote to approve the GISC biannual election resolution as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. All right, we don't have any special items this evening, nor do we have a closed session. So, at 6:40, we're adjourned. Students that are here for class, if you can come up, then anyone with a binder sheet for you.